I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Well, you've got two minutes.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah, but shouldn't we adjourn?
Just to restart over?
Just recess.
We're in.
You're just gonna recess?
We're fine.
And just whatever is official.
As long as it takes.
Trying to make it a little more aggressive.
Not here. You want me to collect everything?
I'll take care of it.
Okay, I'm ready for a minute.
I did.
I don't have anything. They're just my.
Can you give both of them, all three of them, some food?
Yeah, they got a sandwich.
Are you, they got it?
Oh, now they get sandwiches?
Yeah, now they get sandwiches, now they get Subway.
How dare?
Was that in his contract?
An extra X numbers of dollars and a sandwich.
I did.
You go D D G.
I'll get it for him. Thank you.
My good words.
Evidence of. Orders.
The county board of supervisors, October seventeenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places, posted on the county website on October sixth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in the weekly newspaper for the week of October ninth, it was published on the twelfth. In addition, on Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three, at one forty-four P M., the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. And the notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, the website, and copies of such notice were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Thursday, October twelfth, at three forty-five.
Oh, sorry.
That applies with the open meetings of our requirements.
Roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Wardle.
Here.
Ryan Wood. Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié-Pray. Russ Arcand.
Here.
C J Semines.
Here.
And John Bonner Prize.
Here.
We have thirteen of them.
Join me in the pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, okay. Need a motion on the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented, is there any amendments?
Yes, there is an amended agenda, watch your look. All in favor? Same sign. Is offered for these options. Need a motion on the.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion made in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign, public comment. Seeing none.
Um, there, there is public comment upstairs.
There is?
Yes, there is.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, in the west. Although not on Zoom, all right, let me run up and check on them.
Can you listen?
And potato chips did you get?
Oh, I don't want them.
Mom, you got the kids?
Yeah, a lot of them. Higher department.
Yeah, I bet.
Looks pretty sparse up there.
Oh, there's somebody there.
One person.
I think it's a couple, isn't it? Yeah.
I think so.
Let me carry it longer.
We got somebody talking.
Whoever wants to go first can step up.
There we go.
Yeah.
The whole system, there was still a separate room, the camera.
Stand under the camera.
State your name and where you live.
Yes.
Three minutes.
That's how we talk?
Yep.
You can hold the button to talk?
No.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, my name's Brandon DeRoger, I'm on the county fair board. Um, the county fair board voted here at our last meeting to put together a new committee that hopefully we can, we can work with you guys and move forward with this M O U. Uh, we voted four members to the committee, it would be myself and Gail Peterson. Um, she is also a board member, and then we have Dale Wood and Trish Carlson, who are society members. It's basically, we're hoping that you guys will decide to continue negotiations and, and work with this new group and, and uh, hopefully we can come to a, a fairly rapid decision and, and an agreement that's got both parties' best interest in mind and, and uh, we can move forward, so. That's about all I have, so would there be any questions?
Uh, we can't uncomment anyway, but we appreciate your comment, thank you very much.
We can't hear them back?
Can you hear me? Well. Is it? Uh. Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear us?
We can't hear you.
You're getting your steps in today.
That sounds like a breath of fresh air to me.
Malfunction took up two of them. Six minutes.
There's only three of them, should they just come down?
Bring them down, if you can.
I'm only the one wanted to make comments, everybody else is just observing.
Okay, a comment, a com, tell them another comment is all we can expect.
Yep, yep, I took care of that.
Okay, we can't talk or answer it. Okay, closed session, or the public comment is closed. Number eleven, proposed resolution ordinance.
I think we should wait until Shabana gets back in this room so she can keep the minutes.
Please.
Nothing gets by you.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's uh.
We could take this time to think of another reason to send her up there.
Get her exercise, I'll tell you that. I know she's in the elevator.
Could you go back up there one more, we have one more question.
All right, we're on number eleven. Proposed resolutions. One is. The county board. Decision on administrator has been completed. In open session, we're announcing that Bonorby is our selected county, new county board chairman, to take his position on.
You mean administrator?
Administrator on this, yeah, you know, wanted to promote our administrator, but uh. That he takes that position beginning on December first, is that correct, councilor?
Yes.
And we've negotiated his contract with him, is that correct?
Yes.
So he, he will take that position on the first of December of this year. Okay. Now. We need a motion on resolution to hold public hearing in reference to our budget.
I move we adopt resolution forty-two twenty-three. Second.
Motion made in second to adopt resolution twenty, uh, forty-two twenty-three. Question. Hearing none, to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Resolution forty-three twenty-three. Need a motion.
I move for approval.
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion?
On number um, one, line thirty-nine, each citizen member subscribe, are these citizen members that are on, like, we have a citizen member on A D R C or?
Bill Oliva. Bit like Bill?
Oh, Bill, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, on full committees, like the, the, the reg, the four committees that we have, not the sort of like A D R C committees or.
Uh.
I mean, the next layer down, you know what I mean? I don't know how to.
Right. Standing committee, special committees, and ad hoc committees affiliated with the county.
Okay.
So.
That would be like an A D R C or a?
Yeah, if we said it.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Go ahead, neither one of you.
I had some discussion eight years ago on this, and I think Brad was involved, I'm not sure, I think it was Brad, but. One thing we did, we said at that time was. It could need to be increased because it had, I don't know if it just had or not. And I'm not saying that after eight years that it doesn't need to be increased, I'm just saying, I just read all this through this all, and I said, well, maybe it's an awful big jump, from one hundred to one fifty.
Well, it is.
At one time. So I, I'm just throwing that out at you, and way back then, we also didn't take compensation for like. When Lake, Lake Management Districts and things like that, because. Right now, my, the Bone Lake Management District is, is doing it by Zoom, so there was a meeting, it just would happen to be Saturday morning. But we used to be on the back end, the town, the county, and the, and the, uh, but we have two towns, okay, it's the towns and the county. And now they, by courtesy, they moved us up to the front, so they go through the first three steps and then we, we do our, you know, discussion. So I'm there about maybe twenty minutes, so as before, I, I just won't ever turn in a compensation, because I guess we have to be done, we turn it in. And I'm just letting everybody know, I think that maybe some of these outside boards are done pretty fast, and they don't get paid, so that's just my opinion, has been, always been.
All right, Kim.
I think that, I think the, I think we took that out.
We did, we did before, but it's, it's bad, it's not taken out that I can read here.
Okay, but I'm, how'd we come with one fifty, I mean, can we go one twenty-five? I mean, that's, this is a fifty percent increase, that seems pretty steep, too, I think.
Yes.
What, I don't know what, uh, maybe Mo can answer a simple question for us. I hope so. What, what was the drop, truck driver's starting wage ten years ago? How old are they?
Ten years ago?
Approximately.
Approximately seventeen.
Seventeen?
I would say it was in the seventeen range.
And now is, you offer twenty-four starting?
Twenty-one.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a little, little talk here. On the twenty-sixth, I gotta get with Mo and go to a committee meeting in Barron, right?
Right.
And I have to, then I have to go to the fair board meeting at, at six or seven o'clock that night. I only get one fifty for the day, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's a lot, that's a long day for a hundred and fifty bucks, it, it. Works out sometimes where it's better for you, but then you got those two, two meeting days, or, you know, where, you know, I gotta get in the morning, meet him, go to Barron, go to W C H A. Highway Association meeting, I mean, and then uh, come back here, get in my truck, go to the fair meeting. Some, some days you don't come out so good either, you know.
I'm curious where this came from.
It. At our own, it was, we brought it up last year and, two years ago.
It's like an annual thing.
Yeah.
This is required prior to every new election, so that the people who decide to run will know, it came out of the executive committee?
Okay.
Or was it general?
General government.
General government committee as. A recommendation.
Go ahead, Brad.
So, yeah, I, I agree with Doug and Kim, I mean, it, it seems like an, an awfully big jump, um, and I get your point, Steve, but we all have days when we have two meetings, or have to be in six different places in a day, um, and maybe we don't get paid at all for it. And it just seems like a lot to me. So I'm gonna throw an amendment out there and see where it goes, so I would amend it to be two hundred dollars for the county board meetings, but stay at a hundred for everything else, for all committee meetings.
I would second that. Did you get that?
Any discussion on the amended?
I'll give you just an example now, I'm gonna be going to the uh, uh, committee meeting down in Wisconsin Dells on Friday, so I'm gonna leave on Thursday, and it'll be half a day. On Thursday and travel, and so you get fifty dollars for that, and then all day on, all day uh, on Friday morning, and then all the traveling and everything on the way back, and so I'm gonna have a good eight hours and. I, I'm willing to donate as much as I can, but. We recruit players, we recruit people for our county board, and like yourself now, a young person that's being hired, that's why we don't have the young people on the county board. So I, a hundred and fifty dollars uh, is, I think is just a fair compensation, I, I don't even think it is a fair compen, it's fair maybe to a person like me, uh, but to the people that really have vision for the county and uh, living in, in a lifestyle where they gotta, they have family and make sacrifices. Boy, one fifty is, it's, it's pretty minimal, and we got an important job here, and. It's uh. It's important that, that we be as fair as we possibly can.
Okay, the motion on the floors to adopt resolution uh, forty-three twenty-three as presented with, but the amendment is on the floor for consideration to amend the forty-three twenty-three. To be amended as a two hundred dollar for our county board meeting and one hundred dollar for committee meetings.
So.
We're voting on the amendment.
Yep. Could I just, just so that I'm clear, you're talking about changing line seventeen to read two hundred dollars?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
It's gotta be seventeen.
The amendment would be seventeen.
And then line twenty-one would be.
She formatted it, never mind.
And then line twenty-one would be one hundred dollars. Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are the amendments.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying.
Hold on, hold on. No, I, Jake.
Did you want?
Well, seventeen, I mean, it talks about county board meetings, committee of the whole and standing committee meetings attended, are you putting all of them at two hundred, or the county board?
Only county board.
All right, so you gotta.
Strike.
You gotta strike committee of the whole and standing committee meetings attended and move that into another line.
And move down to four.
Would move that from.
And include it to one hundred for all.
Those would be included in the one hundred dollar meeting.
Okay, right.
Is that your motion?
That was.
Is it clear now? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The amendment to the motion passes. So now, with the amended motion, our resolution forty-three twenty-three.
I might have another amendment though.
Pardon?
Well, on line thirty-five, we have the special committee ad hocs affiliated with the county. Do they stay at the one hundred or one fifty? Because some of the special committees, such as the lake ones, there's no compensation. To be on the lake, well, that, that's what we did before, to be on all the lake associations, we took the, that was zeroed out.
You reread the motion?
So far, right now, we already did the amendment, so it's just the.
Make it a motion?
To approve.
No, I'm asking, do I have to, do we have to do that?
Well, we'll have to.
To take that special committee and ad hoc ones.
Are those considered special committees or ad hoc committees, or are those outside? Groups?
It says affiliated with the county as well, and then that, does that line forty get changed to a hundred, do that?
Is a lake association associated with the county?
With the county representative.
Before we changed it to, to zero. They were, I mean, that's the old rule, they got paid up, it was seventy-five then, I think.
Yeah.
So we could add a line to say for lake association, if we need to.
But then you would have to have an amendment.
That, that we would strike that, but now, how about line forty, it has that one fifty in there, what, what do we do with that one?
Goes to a hundred.
That one goes to a hundred, so that we missed? Does that go with that original motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Right here, that goes to a hundred.
Yeah, I'm trying to find what I did with it.
Just one more question.
With that line. I just had that. Which one goes?
This one here goes to a hundred, too.
Right.
Committee of the chief of the mountain.
Yeah.
One more clarification.
Go ahead.
It says, I don't know which line it's on, but it says that ad hoc committees, chairs always also get compensation, and I'm on the A T V U T V snowmobile committee, and I've never gotten paid, and I would try and get out of getting paid, because they're there as volunteers, and I wouldn't feel comfortable getting paid, but I wouldn't get paid because they're on the same day, so I just wanna ask that question, what if you're on one?
Anybody can not put in for reimbursement for anything.
That's what I'm saying.
And it, it hasn't been clear to me what things are compensated and what aren't, like, I didn't know that, like, the library. That, you know, I never put in for that, so I think going forward, it'd be really helpful as new people come in to make it really clear which things are compensated and which things are not, um, because it was not very clear to me coming in, so.
Never been clear to me either.
Oh, well, gosh, I don't feel so lonely then. I mean, I get now that the lake thing, that's, that was a decision, but some of the other things I'm not so clear about.
Jane?
Yeah.
So back to Doug's point, I mean, lake, lake associations are still exempt from all of this, right? I was trying for clarification there, Doug, I mean.
Because that's what they're asking for, I don't, I don't know.
So seeing as though we're not getting paid for them today, does that mean we're not getting paid for them beyond this point, because they're gonna, I just wanna make sure I know.
Yeah, might be, were you putting in here or something?
I guess it depends on how lake associations are defined, are they a special committee and ad hoc committee, and if they are, then there would be compensation, but if, if they don't fall in those categories, then I guess it's outside of this resolution.
Because that, we paid citizens to be in that, too, so that, this was each citizen member, I mean, that line thirty-three down is for citizen members, not for us. You know, you read line thirty-three down, that's compensation for each citizen member of these boards.
But it's still, as far as the lake association goes, it still defend, depends on how that's defined. As to whether that applies to it or not.
Well. What do you wanna do with it?
Amendment and a line five, that says, uh, the lake association volunteers are not paid any compensation.
Might amend it to that?
An amendment to, to add that wherever we should have it.
You got that?
Can you say where you want that again?
Where that, the lake association is a non-paid meeting, how's that? That would've worked that way?
Exempt from payment, do I exempt from payment?
Exempt from payment, yeah.
Need a second, honor.
Does Brad accept that amendment to his amendment?
No, this is. It's a new amendment.
Second.
Second amendment, I should say.
Second to the second amendments.
Second to the second amendment, all, any more discussion, honor?
Do we just, do we just isolate it as lake association or?
Clarify it.
Should we say something about extended meetings, like, I go to all the town board and most of the village board, and I don't put in for any compensation.
There is no compensation.
There is none for those.
That's a different.
That's different, yeah. My question was, do we need it?
I don't think so.
No.
You have to ask the chair.
If you put in for that, it would be denied.
Yeah.
So this would be like line six, you know, each, I, you know, so it'd be on line thirty-two, we'd add this, that no comp, no compensation, okay?
Have you got, you want me to read that second amendment, Barron?
Yeah, it's just the lake, the lake associations are exempt from reimbursement, I guess we can say.
Okay.
But that would be.
Go ahead.
That would be, it's exempt for not just committee member or uh, board members, but also for the volunteers.
No, just, just if they're appointed by the board.
Oh, oh, okay, I understand that.
If, if, if one of us don't do it, a citizen can do it for you, so it would be a citizen or, uh, it'd be a county board, uh, person, or their designate would not be paid.
The lake association is a separate entity, some of them pay their, their uh, members and.
Some don't, yeah.
Their own, and some county board members could be included in that, I'd been offered that and denied a year.
Yeah.
So they're a separate entity, just like townships are separate entities.
So just from a, from a drafting standpoint, should that, does that really fall in either the one through five or the one and two, or should that be a, another, be it further resolved? Because it doesn't seem to fit really either in the first tranche or in the, the second.
I think it falls under the first one, yeah, it's under line thirty-two, yeah, because it's compensation for supervisors.
Oh, okay.
And stuff, so it does say that.
I have a tenuous grasp on that.
Put it on both, but I think.
I'll refer to you on that.
Okay, are we clear, honor? All right, on the second amendment to resolution forty-three twenty-three. Need a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign. Now, are we back to the original resolution of? Now, are we back to the original resolution of forty-three twenty-three? We need to adapt that or whatever.
Move for adoption, add.
Need a motion to adopt it, add.
With the amendments.
The amendments.
Second.
Second to that. Oh, any more discussion? Oh, any more discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Wage study update, President.
Okay, we have, uh, our consultant who helped us work through the wage study, Melena is her name, and she's here from McGrath Associates, and you can see her on the screen, and Melena has a presentation for you to give you an overview of all the great work that she's done and, and how it can, I think, affect our county, uh, staff. So Melena, would you like to begin?
Excellent, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Yes.
Wonderful, I just wanna, uh, let, uh, someone know that the host has disabled the screen sharing, so I'm not actually able to share the PowerPoint, so while they're working on that, let me just introduce myself and, um, and we'll, we'll kind of punt it here. Um, the, the PowerPoint presentation will be made available to you, so if you do decide that you want to go back and reference it, simply because this is an update, we're not one hundred percent done with the project yet, please feel free, uh, to get a copy from administration. My name is Melena Halverson Mays, I am a senior consultant with McGrath Human Resources Group, and, um, I have been working with your administration team and all of your department heads for the last couple of months on the compensation or the wage study. And we are to the point now where we are gonna start putting it into final form, and it is certainly a topic that is gonna be coming up in your budget here this evening. Before we do have it in final form, though, I thought it would be good for me to just introduce to you a very high-level look at the project, what we do, how we derive at our recommendations, and much more detail is gonna be provided to you here once you get a copy of our final report, um, when, when, when we get that, uh, when we get that prepared for you. Um, a, a little bit of background about me and, and a little bit of background about McGrath. We are a public sector consulting firm, uh, and we have been in business for the last twenty-three years. We primarily serve the public sector, uh, we have clients in forty-two states all across the United States, and right now, we have, uh, we've actually exceeded a five hundred projects, five hundred clients. I've been with McGrath now for the last nine years, and I work predominantly on compensation and benefits for the public sector, not only in Wisconsin, but all throughout the United States, but I do wanna talk just a moment about what's happening in the state of Wisconsin, simply because you may or may not know this, but I live just a couple hours away from you in Triple Falls. My background is in county human resources here at the state level, I worked at a county, uh, for about fifteen years, and so I come with a little bit of a unique perspective in that I, I understand county operations at a, I would say, at a, a basic level for, for most departments, but I understand the positions, and because I've been working compensation now for the last nine years, not only in Wisconsin, but also across the United States, I, I really feel like between those two pieces of information, that's why Dr. McGrath puts me on the Wisconsin projects. Our firm has worked with a number of comparable organizations, um, that are involved in your project, and, um, specifically within your region, we have served and continue to serve Barron County, we have, uh, historically and continue to serve Burnett County, and also St. Croix County, and those are three of the six approved comparables that we have, so at least half of the organizations that make up your labor market, we have, uh, we support them and their wages. We also have other projects all across the state of Wisconsin, and, um, I will let you take a peek at that when you, uh, when you have the, um, if you get, have a chance to see the PowerPoint. Okay, so let's talk just for a minute about, uh, let's talk about the, the, the project and, um, and what we do. When we, uh, when we have, when we work projects, we have a very set methodology that we work from with our clients, and this methodology is something that we use for everybody, and we've worked it for the past twenty-three years, although we tweak it a little bit as best practices change within our industry. So when we first started working with Polk County, the first thing that we did was we sat down with your administration and your human resources department to gain an understanding of, you know, what kind, what kinds of challenges are you experiencing right now? What's working and what's not working within your compensation structure? And then we met with every, uh, every department head so that we could understand what level of programs and services they're providing, and then we also talked with them about what their positions are responsible to do, all of their positions within each of their respective departments, because we understand that across the state, there's going to be some variance in the type of, in type of services that might be provided on a department-to-department basis, and we don't wanna assume that we know how Polk County is structured. From that point then, what we did was, we, uh, we asked for the employees to give us additional information about what their responsibilities are. Now, we have the job descriptions, we've looked at your policies, we've looked at your compensation sys, uh, system, but we needed additional information, and so we specifically asked the employees that hold the positions to give us additional information, and that allows us then to take a look at positions, we call it a position analysis, and that establishes what we call a classification structure. It helps us then understand if you have, for example, ten administrative assistants and they all work in different departments, are they all doing the same or similar work where they should be, um, paid at the same salary range? So we've done a real, a real deep analysis of all of those positions, and we, we have included that with our recommendations. At the same time that the employees were giving us their information, we went out to the comparable market, and that comparable market is made up of six counties that are in your immediate area. We, we talked through that, um, to some extent with administration on, on those, but it's my understanding that by policy, the county has identified these counties as your comparable market, because I can't turn on my, my screen, I'll just tell you who they are. It's Barron County, Burnett County, Shisago County over on the Minnesota side, Dunn County, Pierce County, and St. Croix County. So what we did then was we took that comparable market, we collected all of their salary information, and then when we analyzed that, and what that analysis allows us to do is, is in a very meaningful way, based on actual data that's provided to us from those other organizations. How is Polk County paying their positions against what we now call your comparable market or your labor market? And in order for us to give you meaningful recommendations that are data-driven, we need to run through that process, and that takes us several months to do. When we did that, what we, what we found overall, and you will see this in the final report, we're going to have some charts that show how Polk County, uh, looks in comparisons to that external market. And, and so in summary form, just for the purposes of this evening, we found that if we were to take, break it down from a hundred percent, what we found is that three out of four of your positions are, are too far under the market at the minimums level, looking at just getting that minimum or that entrance rate to the organization. It's too far below what the rest of your labor or comparable market is paying for similar type positions. And so because we found that your ranges were, were that far off, we worry then for you that, uh, that you're not gonna be able to retain your, your quality personnel, and that you're not gonna be able to recruit in the future. So those data pieces that we found really were the anchor to the recommendations that we have developed here for the county. The, the recommendations, um, that we are in process of finalizing, um, really results in, it's a range model, that range model is going to have very specific data points, and those data points are going, are, they come directly from that analysis that we do from the market, so we rely very heavily on the data that we've collected. We also then consider that position analysis, we have to also consider compression or the amount of separation that there may be between positions, if you have a, like, a career ladder opportunity, for example, and then there's always that internal equity piece, so for example, going back to those administrative assistants, if by our analysis, we identify that all of those administrative assistants are performing substantially similar work, we wanna make sure that internally, we're going to put them on the same pay grade. So we've developed those recommendations, and I have been meeting with all of your department directors, um, and that is very typical of our process. We consider it our quality control check, we ask the departments to take a look at our draft recommendations, and if, if they see something that they feel is concerning, this is really the time to talk with me about it so that I can go back and look at my market data, or I can go back and look at my position information and, and feel confident in how we are placing all of those positions within those respective salary ranges. We're gonna be finishing those meetings up here this week, and then after I am all done with those meetings, I will finalize my rec, my recommendations, and I'm going to turn them over to your county administration, and that is really what drives the dollar that we are asking, um, for the budget. So that in summary is where we are at, and I know that you probably, um, you know, I apologize that you don't have the, the, um, the PowerPoint, we'll make sure that you can get a copy of that, and more information will be coming in the final report and over the course of the next several weeks. At this point, can I answer any questions for anybody?
Anybody?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Maybe it's a question for Vince, but will we have these numbers for the budget, I know this has been kind of the thing, right?
Yeah, we've got a, a lot of work has been done, we've got a pretty good estimate, now it's just fine-tuning some of the details. So we have put in the budget, the expected cost. There may be, you know, we may not be exact on this, and so we built, in the, in my contingency fund, a certain amount of money to say, if we're off, we're still covered here, but we feel pretty comfortable with the, the big picture of what we've got in there.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Was, uh, Vince, are all five of our departments, uh, are they all, five of them below what she was considering?
I guess in, in my layman's terms, because that's how I understand it, is in each of the wage scales, at the minimum, in general, we're below, but we looked at each one individually, and, and many of them, the, the beginning wage scale there was too low, so those will be increased right off the bat.
Including the highway department?
All of them. If, and it's based on the job and what the pay is, now there, there may be some jobs that the pay is normal, but we, we think, uh, that the directors I've gone through it with individually have all looked at it and go, that'll help, so.
That pretty much tells why there isn't really any of our departments that are on full staff.
Any other questions?
So, uh, so you just looked at the, the entry level wage, or did you, I mean, did you look at like the median and?
Yeah.
Higher end as well, okay.
We, we sure did, we actually, when we go to the market, we collect, um, we will collect the, the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, and also the incumbent, actual incumbent wages, so that we understand, um, if there is something that might be off within a salary range, if someone's paying outside of their salary range, we will see that from time to time, because there may be an industry that is really being stressed right now, and they push all of their incumbents to the maximum, so we, we need to understand that. When you see the, when you see everything in final form, we will have all of that labeled out for you so that you can see in total what's your, what's your ranges, um, were looking like, but generally speaking, and this is a, just a, a broad brush, it, you know, exactly what Vince said, that the majority of your positions, their salary range, not only at the minimum, but the majority of the, the entire ranges themselves, they just simply needed to shift. And, you know, our goal for you has been to make sure that you are at a competitive place in the market within those, that, that comparable market that we identified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, good night.
Okay, administrator operating the capital budget.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Been a lot of work going into this budget like every year, so I'm happy to finally present this to you and let you, uh, comment, make suggestions, recommendations, and so on. Go to the next slide, Claire, just let me say, as I say every year, budget time. This is the hardest thing, and, and I talk to the directors each year as well, and that is, there are an unlimited number of worthy projects, ideas, programs, things, unlimited. But the purpose of this budget is to identify those which will help us achieve our goals, make the tough decisions to say, what is it that's important? We can't afford to do an unlimited number of worthy things. So as we've done in the past three years, we have looked at this and tried to put together what we think, with the help of all of our staff and with the help of the committees, the things that we think are most worthy a, and critical to include in the budget. The next slide will go to opportunities, we're gonna build on some of our recent successes. If you recall, the project or the goals that you all set forth at the board, uh, three years ago, and then this year, we've added a couple to that current fourth. What's good about that is the priorities that you all set three years ago are still priorities today, but we're making progress on them, and so we expanded to include housing and infrastructure for this next round of longer-term goal. The other thing that is an opportunity for us is that with the budget, the state is going to reward intergovernmental joint ventures. And we feel here at Polk County, we have the framework, we have the structure, we have the leadership, uh, and the ability basically to take advantage of that. We will work with other counties next year, we will gather, uh, our resources, combine it with resources in other counties or other organizations, and as a result, be eligible for grant money, so these are things that we can apply for the state and maybe do things more efficiently. Instead of small county and small county, we'll combine resources, so to speak, and the state will fund part of that work, so we think there's an opportunity there. Next, we'll look at our challenges. And of course, the challenge again is, how do we maintain our focus on multiple priorities, not to mention the emerging priorities that pop up on a regular basis throughout the course of the year. Another, uh, priority which we did sort of a little bit about is attracting and retaining workforce. I met with the, well, there was an award banquet this morning with the Economic Development Corporation, and again, it was reiterated probably, and not only in this county, but in every county of the state, is everyone's looking for workforce. And so how do we do that? And you think about some of those priorities, if we hit on those and advance those, what it's going to do is attract or maintain people to say Polk County is a great place to live, work. And then the other challenge, of course, are budget pressures. We, we've become accustomed somewhat in the last few years to having some ARPA funds. Over the last ten, fifteen years, the company has done a good job of, of stockpiling some money into our, what we call our savings plan, and that's great, but we also know that around the corner are gonna be some increasing challenges with inflation, uh, with workforce, with the reduction in federal and state funds. So with that in mind, we had to develop a strategy, again, to provide for the priorities that we set. The next slide, just a snapshot, and this is what I'm happy to announce, uh, revenues this year, anticipate, or twenty-four anticipated to be sixty-three point one million, expenses at sixty-three point one million. That means we have a balanced budget as we speak, if, if, as approved, if it does get approved as it is. Now, the levy, as you know, is limited by the state, uh, we do get some increases, uh, based on net new construction, uh, and, uh, maybe a few other things, but the bottom line is, is the levy has gone up very slightly, uh, ninety-nine thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-three. What that means, in addition to that, uh, are. What that means, in addition to that, uh, are uh. Our uh appraised values of homes and properties have gone up and our our mill rate has declined. To two ninety-five, two dollars ninety-five cents per one thousand. This past year, it was three dollars and thirty-four cents. So as the appraised value of properties go up, our mill rate has a similar decline. Fiscal year twenty-four. FTEs will be at about three hundred and ninety-six throughout the entire organization. That's down from last year by about eight of four hundred and four, and we'll get into this in more detail a little bit later. Proposed budget allows for investment in our priorities. So you'll see throughout this that that we, and in your booklets and in this presentation. Uh, that we continue to focus on those things. In fact, when additional funding requests or ideas come up to spend money with me. First thing that gets asked is which of the priorities does that address? Sometimes it's none. That doesn't mean we automatically say no, but if I say yes, that is one of the, you know, the priority of. Uh, reducing uh drug abuse, you know, well, then we're going to give it extra special consideration. Go to the next slide. Okay, the key budget figures that are of interest to all of you. If you look at first, the total budget. Uh, is up a minimal amount, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for a total budget of sixty-three million. So it's a very marginal amount, and that's uh because really our goal was stay flat as much as possible. We knew there'd be some challenges and you'll see some of those, and so we did that. Uh, revenues, sixty-three million and change. Uh, that's up that same amount. Expenditures. This is basically just a fifty-seven thousand dollar dollars under what we anticipate revenues to be. Uh, look at fiscal year twenty-three, and you'll notice that our revenues were at sixty-two point eight million. And expenditures were sixty-five point eight. The difference was just under three million dollars in in the red. If you recall, last year at this meeting, we had some capital improvements that we said, let's fund those things. So that would include things like the Justice Center roof, the additional work on that, uh, the recycling center. Uh, and and those things, they added. And if you recall, the board voted to say, let's take that money from the general fund and pay for those items. So that's why we dipped into our general fund a little bit last year. Um, the levy coming in calculated at twenty-three million, very small increase. Uh, you see sales tax, we now project that at uh four million eight hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and we'll get into more specifics on how we came up with that here later on. The uh debt service, notice the debt service is lower, because right now we don't anticipate taking out. Uh, more loans or or bonding uh for next year. We can, if we choose to, but uh one of the things that we're recommending is given. Uh, the surplus more than we thought we would have for two thousand twenty-two. For some of the capital improvements, it's used a portion of that surplus instead of borrowing that money. And what that effect does on our uh levy is it actually lowers it by almost around two hundred thousand dollars. So it's almost a way you can say to the taxpayers, you know, we are doing something to lower. Uh, how much you're going to be taxed, we're not borrowing. Now, in the future, we may choose to borrow. And in fact, I would encourage it in the sense that when we have major projects. But if you look at this year, it's not like we had the multimillion dollar project, some of the big. Items that you would normally borrow money for. We had a lot of smaller things, a truck uh in. Uh, Moe's area, lawn mowers, or some other basic things that aren't as expensive. And we said, rather than borrow for that. Let's stick with uh some of our surplus from two thousand twenty-two. The mill rate is down, you can see the comparison uh of FTE in the organization. You say, how did we drop that much? I'll tell you, a chunk of that came from GAM, which has gotten smaller. Uh, but you'll also see in the rest of your organization, we're down a few as well, net. Moving on to revenue. Um, you will see the, also the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, you can move on, Claire. The uh Polk County equalized values, I mentioned the value of this county, the properties continue to go up. That's happening in a lot of places. We saw uh in twenty-three over twenty-two at thirteen point nine percent increase in equalized values. Um, now, if you like property taxes, you say, whoa, property tax is going to go way up. But no, what happens is we bring our net. Uh, mill rate down so that in effect, you don't see an increase uh for that average taxpayer. Uh, for that. Notice that the change from twenty-one to twenty-two was bigger percentage-wise. It was about eighteen and a half percent. That, if you recall, just a couple of years ago, that's when the property values really shot up. We were building homes, we were reassessing properties. So, but still thirteen nine, thirteen point nine percent is a significant. Increase in equalized values. So corresponding to that, then the next slide. Addresses the mill rate. At what percent per one thousand dollars are we taxed on our property? And you can see it drops in a corresponding manner uh to the previous slide. The drop there is about eleven point six percent in terms of a mill rate. Uh, the reason it's not exactly the same, because there was a slight uh increase in our levy due to net new construction. Okay, questions so far on any of this? This is some background info. Uh, the next slide. Sales tax estimates. Um, these are the things that get Donna and me excited when they come to us every month and they show us how much we're getting in sales tax. It's a testament to the strong economy here in Polk County. And in the past, I think we may have, you know, so let's be cautious with this, because we never want to. Overestimate what our tax is going to be and then come up with a shortfall, right? She always gave ourselves a little cushion. We've been pretty consistently performing at a high rate. And we think it's it's responsible that we get closer to what we think the real projection will be without going over. But you will see in two thousand twenty-two. That was like uh four point nine five. In twenty-three, though, we projected to be down a little bit, I'm guessing. And I'm not a an economist, but I would say we'll come in at that four seven range, uh, four seven, four eight. Uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're projecting. Uh, oh gosh, what is that, Don? About four point, well, we said four point eight five, I believe, right? So the bottom line is, we are showing good growth. The economy is strong. Property values are up, people are buying homes still. Uh, the other thing I call it is the uh Amazon economy. Because instead of people going to the malls, people are ordering through Amazon or whomever, and it's being shipped to their house now. And when that happens, the property stack tax or the uh sales tax stays local. So I think that's been a contributor to why our sales tax continues to go up. Which is great, and we we use it, we encourage people to continue spending their money when they can. Uh, next. Help will go to uh next slide. There we go, the FTE count. This breaks down a little bit, our FTEs. The bottom line is, is that our FTE count, that's a good way to say, you know, because this is our biggest expense item in the budget. Is we continue to trend in the flat or slightly down mode. We try to be more efficient. We challenge every new open position to say, does it need reef, you know, to be backfilled? In a lot of cases, it does, but in a lot of cases, we find that many of our jobs can be. Shared or coordinated with other jobs, or we change the job enough that instead of needing two people, we only need one in a certain area. Um, the drop, if you look at the total drop is about eight. But if you you look at down below, that's, you know, three or so came from GAM this coming year. Uh, in terms of the county, uh, we've had a couple of, or three. Within the the maintenance crew that we are now contracting out. And then we also did a reanalysis of our FTEs, and without getting into the complex details of that, we found that over years. We might have an FTE of point one in one department, point nine in another department. Point, four point two in one department and maybe another position of point three. They all got jiggled around there. And so what we did is went in and cleaned it up and realized that some of those points. Of an FTE or percentages of an FTE are no longer being used. And so we cleaned up that. So that also contributes to this. The good thing is, is that we're trending down and we still added. Um, two people in ADRC to help with transportation. In our new study and and our new effort to encourage transportation opportunities for people. Uh, but remember, they were funded through a grant. Uh, we also uh eliminated permar over in the Justice Center and as a result, put in two more corrections officers to do this. This building, but the cost was equal to what we were paying permar. So while we added some people in some cases, it's not costing the county more money. Um, and you will find out later that we've got two other FTEs that we are recommending to be added. Uh, a corrections officer and a dispatch person because of the shortfall and some of the demands placed over in our law enforcement area. And so those are included in our budget as well. All right, the next slide, you heard a little bit uh from uh Malena. And the bottom line is, is is it be, it was becoming very competitive. And I can't tell you the number of people who came up to my office and said. If you're not careful, I'm going to leave. They're paying my same position in this county or that county so much more than what I'm getting paid here. And so we wanted to do this wage study to say what in fact is happening. Because in most cases, when I did the investigation, their numbers were wrong, that that in fact, they weren't. Uh, getting paid significantly better than us and the and the people who came up to see me. But we knew that we had to remain competitive and we knew that workforce was going to be one of our challenges going forward. And so we asked McGrath Company to study it and look at the comparables. And I think what she basically said, and I'll paraphrase it and boil this down. Is that many of our folks in those lower levels of a scale, the starting pay of a scale. Are paid less than in our competitive companies. Many in the middle ranges and upper ranges were paid pretty adequately. Fairly, so to speak. And that's a generalization, of course. But anytime you raise the minimum of a group, you get closer to those in the middle of the top, and it's what you call compression. And all of a sudden, you got somebody that's done a great job for fifteen years, being paid just slightly more than somebody who's been here a year. And so everybody is pro- not everybody, a great percentage of our people are going to see some benefit. Uh, next year, when we do their uh wage adjustments. Uh, and we have calculated, in fact, I think, yes, we have it up there in the slide. We've anticipated in terms of wages and benefits overall for the county about a six percent increase. Uh, so fiscal year twenty-four, that's thirty-four point three million dollars. We're going to be very competitive. We think that most people will look at our pay and say, this is a pretty good darn, a pretty darn good deal. And the benefits, we think, have always been good and they're only getting better. So we feel pretty good about investing in this wage study to where we can roll out to our employees. Here's where we are, and I think people will be proud to work here. Um, the next slide, one of the topics that comes up every year is outside agencies. And I always appreciate when the groups come in and talk to us about what they would ask us for now. One of the things that I've always mentioned to these outside agencies is. It's important, you know, we want to encourage outside agencies to become self-sufficient. Do what they can to to pay for things themselves, so that the average taxpayer doesn't have to put in a lot of money. So we try, we've been trying to keep things relatively flat. And this year, what I've recommended is, first of all, West Central Regional Planning Commission. It's up about two thousand dollars. That is a catch and quarry requirement. It's based on our population, I believe. After the census, so we just had a census completed, and there's a contribution will be going up about three thousand dollars. We had one new group that we have included uh this year, and that's the Community Referral Agency. If you recall, they're the ones that provide shelter for uh battered uh women. Uh, and some other types of agencies like that. They've been in the county a while. Uh, they asked for ten thousand dollars. Our thought being, uh, rather than just give what they asked for, we just said, let's get them started out. Let's bring them back again next year and see what they've done with the money and and how it's progressed. Um, we've kept all the others relatively flat, a slight bump for kinship. Uh, kinship has recently moved from the jail over to offices in this building. They asked for a small amount more, but we've kept uh the others flat, except the fair. Which came in and asked for less money this year than they did last year. And so we we uh and granting or I'm recommending the amounts that they requested. Tourism, I kept flat. Uh, they asked for an additional twenty thousand. My recommendation, based on uh what they presented to us, some of the the changes that. Uh, they're trying to make is is probably not the year to give them more money. Yet in addition, I would say this, the Economic Development Corporation, which historically has gotten sixty thousand. The last two years, we've given them an additional ten thousand for some tourism efforts on their part. Uh, and what we've seen is their tourism web, their website, uh, their outreach is having a huge impact. With this ten thousand dollars this year, uh, they are creating, and they have created a campaign called Prosper in Polk. And what that is, is it through tourism venues, contacts people who come over here. Who may want to choose to raise their family here. And so through this tourism, they're actually promoting tourism in the county. But when they do, they are connected with, are you interested in working here? They use social media, they use LinkedIn, Facebook. And, you know, I can tell you from my own personal experience, when you come over here and visit and you see things you like, you think. I wonder if I could live here. I wonder if I could find a job here and be happy and take care of my family. And that's exactly what this Prosper in Polk campaign is doing. So we feel very good about what they're doing for tourism. Uh, as well as for bringing in workforce. The bottom line, flat. Same amount of money as last year, uh, much like we did with the the directors here, and we said, we want you to come in with a flat budget. Okay, next. Next slide. All right, this is the health fund balance, which you've heard about. As you recall, we several years ago said, let's try to take this huge, what we thought at the time was a huge health, health fund balance. And over the next seven years, bring it back down to where uh the actuariales will say, this is how much money you really need to have in there. What I'm trying to show here is the beginning net assets in twenty-two, then again in twenty-three, and then twenty-four. So going from eight million to six million to four million. And then net surplus or deficit, as you can see, we've we've dipped into that the last couple of years more than we thought. The bottom line is, ending net assets, we think at the end of next year's budget. Uh, we will be where that actuarial says we should be, and that's if we're on, if we hit it. And that's our projection. So we thought we'd have a couple of more years to pull from that. But because expenses, the cost of healthcare has gone up so quickly. Um, we're actually going to hit it next year. We do have a little money in my contingency fund in case we miss that, because we don't want it to get too far below that actuarial. Because if things hit uh from a healthcare perspective, uh, we want to make sure we're covered there. What I will say, though, is the great work our HR department is doing, we're working with um JA Counter. And we're looking at ways we can be smarter with our health plan. And I've been very impressed with, there are things we can do in the county, which actually will improve the healthcare package we offer our employees and their families. But at the same time, it'll save us money. And it's just things that we have to do better at communicating, we have to enforce things differently. Uh, and and it's, sometimes you you just have to give maybe a new opportunity for people. And I'll just give you a quick example. We we continue to go to. We, we continue to go to emergency rooms for everything. And the reason may be because when you call your doctor, say, I've got, hurt my knee. I need to, it just hurts. Can I come in? And they'll say, well, we can't see you for three weeks. Doctors are full. Why don't you go to the emergency room? And you'll go in and they give you some aspirin and a bill for $900 and send you home. We, we think there are ways to encourage people, a disincentive, so to speak, to say, hey, you're going to pay more of that money if you go to the emergency room. But secondly, before you go to the emergency room, go online and do telemedicine. And we're going to provide them a service in which they can talk to a doctor face to face and with their computer or with their phone, show them that knee that scraped up or whatever. That's one way. The other way is we're finding that if we don't shop for healthcare services, guess what? Prices go way up. We are going to now use a third party that once a doctor says, you need to go have this procedure done, here's a specialist I recommend. The next call is not to that specialist, it's to a third party company called Alethius, who has all the information on the quality of care in Polk County and their costs. And we can, we can recommend to that patient, not only something that's costing a lot less, but the quality of care has been rated higher. The success or the outcomes is rated higher. Makes sense, doesn't it? Somebody told me to go see this doctor instead of that one. I'd say, yeah, you're just making more money on me or you're saving yourselves more money. But what this plan will do is incent the employee, better quality care, I'm saving the county $3,000. We'll give that employee money back of that $3,000, a percentage of that. So there's some things we can do, we can address right now on healthcare. And I fully expect us to do a better job of slowing that drop in the healthcare fund. Okay. Next. General fund balance. Everybody's, you know, I've been asking, how much do we have to spend and so on? So I thought I'd break out here, what we have in our general fund. Beginning balance in of this year was a little over almost $32 million. Reserved by county policy was 15 and a half million dollars. And that's that 57 limit that we have to encumber that if you, doesn't mean you can't use that money, but it would take a budget amendment or a two thirds vote of this board. But from that, we have previously encumbered funds, capital projects, things like the Justice Center roof, the recycling center, Clam Falls Dam, the command center last year, you know, 200,000. Those things get added on. We haven't spent that money yet, but it's encumbered. So you have to remove that. So the unencumbered balance of about 7.8 million dollars. However, you'll see in this year's budget, the idea of possibly using the surplus general fund from 2022 to pay for some of the capital expenditures that I provisionally approved. In addition, our housing resolution that we passed, that would be, you know, taken out of that because we're holding back $200,000. It's not an expense, but it's rather $200 that we will loan, become, and they'll pay us back. So the bottom line is, the proposed updated unencumbered balance will be about $6.7 million. We're financially strong. Solid. We have to be careful. You know, because with the changing economy, with rising costs and with the unknown, it's very important that we treat, you know, the taxpayers' money in a way that recognizes there may be challenges ahead. So if I go to the next page, the takeaways. We have now a balanced budget proposed for you to consider. We have higher equalized values, reducing our mill rates. The levy is an increase of four tenths of 1%. That's a very, very small increase in the levy. And FTEs are flat to trending down, which we think is important. Especially as you start paying higher wages for folks, you have to become more efficient. You have to think about how we can do more with less. And because we have to pay, you know, our most valuable asset is our people, we got to keep those folks. General fund balance, about $7 million, which is available. But the proposed budget allows for investments in our priorities. And it includes those new expenditures, capital expenditures, which I'll show you here soon, that I provisionally approved with your approval. Questions? Next, we'll get into.
Have the for the 34, 3 million for the employee that 6% raised?
Yeah, that is.
Is that included?
That's included in there. Yeah.
So it isn't.
All right. Yeah. We'll get into the capital improvements. Just so you know, I have what I've so far provisionally said, here's what I recommend. I'll show you not only in capital, but in some operating events as well. And also the special administrator recommended is the housing loan that we passed a resolution, but we need to approve it in the budget. I also have a list of things that I've, yes, you could say I've said no to, but what I call is put them on hold. And again, it's not that they're, they're bad ideas, but for one reason or another, this isn't going to be the year to do them. We have other opportunities, other ways to address it, capacity to do it. So I'll touch on those briefly going forward. You should have in front of you this list. These are the things that, in terms of additional funding requests from all the directors, we look at them and, and again, hats off to them because they heard Don and myself harp for several months now about choose wisely. You know, it's like I used to tell my daughter before a date, choose wisely. And it's, it's the same with the budget. It's, you can ask for a lot. And sometimes the feeling is, hey, it doesn't hurt to ask. But we kept ensuring or reassuring them that you have to be bright and, and conscious of what you're asking for. Don't, this is not the year to ask for the, oh, wouldn't it be nice? But rather come in with what you really need. The total here is 1.2 million dollars. I will point out, it's hard to see on this graph, but there in source one column, you see the 110 fund. For those of you who may recall, that is our internal loan fund. So it's, it's, so the upgrade in the dispatch consoles, the sheriff's department will get that from the county, that $200,000, but then they pay it back over time, a little bit at a time. So when you remove, the 110 funds were down to about 940,000, I believe, something along those lines. But you can see, there's some interesting things in here. One, the dispatch consoles, because, you know, how long have we heard the need over there to help those folks in the dispatch center with not only people, but to make them more efficient? It's time that we upgrade that. Installing security glass at the Justice Center, that's expensive. But it's one of those things where, as Malia says, you get a lot of grouchy people going up to the clerk of court's window, you know, and they're paying fines and they're, you know, getting orders from a judge and so on. And they've requested it, and I think it, it makes sense to give them a little security right there in those windows. The CISA building, air conditioner needs replaced. That's the one over there. Oh, the 2007, these Sterling truck needs replaced. It's used by the cycling, recycling center. The cost of these things are not cheap. CISA building needs a boiler replaced. Blood cars, a bobcat, tool cat, that's in the facilities area. Ours is, I think, so old that we're just due that we have to get it done. And you saw, and you get down to some pretty small things. Many of those are very easy because they're simple things that over years need replaced. And we didn't have those big $3 million projects. And that's why we didn't think this was the year to, to borrow, to pay for a lot of little things. Instead, we thought with the surplus that we got in 2022, we can take a portion of that surplus, knock these things off right away. And then next year, when an event comes up or a major need presents itself, another roof, another issue, then we'll have some fund, the capacity to borrow money very easily, and it wouldn't affect the taxpayer to any significant extent. Now, in addition to capital improvements, we had a couple of operational things that we approved. As I've mentioned, an additional corrections offer, officer for sheriff and the, and the Justice Center. If you recall, when we took permar away and we replaced them with two security officers, they could be used in the jail. They could also be used, not only with security over there, but security in this building. We think it's important that we, we do a little bit more at least to improve security in this building. But then you have two, and you know, it's hard to just have two because people are on vacation, they're sick or whatever. And it made sense to have a third, and they were in need of that. It would help them over in the Justice Center. So provisionally, I would approve those for a total cost of $192,000. The next slide is the loan program for municipalities, which by the way, at the EDC breakfast this morning, hats off to Terry. I'll, I'll thank him the next time I see him. He did a great job of promoting that to all the business people at this session. And I can't tell you, there are a number of people that came up to me after that and said, I want to talk to you about it. So I'll show you a little bit later in the, in the meeting, what we have planned next for that. We're going to be reaching out to communities in the next week, telling them about this potential for loans. We'll see what kind of interest it generates. The, the reaction was, it wasn't what I thought. I, I expected people to go, that's all? More than that. But instead, they're going, no, we're working with people. Every little bit makes a difference. And so they're anxious to hear about this. So that I would recommend approval as well. I mentioned the next slide, the ones I, I classify as on hold, one of which we just wanted to make sure is on your mind. Not for this year necessarily, but next year. The old jail right next door here. It's just sitting there. It's actually doing a really good job for us right now in storing items, equipment, files, and it's a great storage facility. We can't put people in it because it needs a lot of work in terms of fire protection, HVAC, that type of work. If we were going to demolish it, tear it down, you know, it could range anywhere from 500,000. If you want to make it renewed office space, it could go as high as $2 million, we think. I'm not recommending we do that this year. Let's, let's continue to use it in a way it's being appreciated by us is, is a storage unit. I think the sheriff's department uses it as training on occasion, or at least you used to. And I would keep doing that until a board decides that they have a real desire and a way to use that building in an effective way. But it will cost you a lot of money because that's an old jail. And you gotta repair some stuff. And it's also kind of hard to knock down some walls when you got rebar and all that through it, I'm guessing. So that's one. We had a request for replacing the financial reporting system. You know, that's a way that, that our accountants and the departments can keep track of their spending and that type of thing. Probably does need replaced. However, we also have some other things going on next year with HR, the system there. And we don't feel comfortable doing both of them in the same year. We think this is something that we can do just fine with what we have, but maybe the following year, we'll address the financial system. In CJCC, there's a request for an FTE for pre-trial supervision. So this would be like a probation person working with somebody after their arrest, before their, their trial, to kind of keep them in line. This is one of those things where goes not to do this year because we think there might be, we hope so, some, some support from the Department of Justice, which might pay for this. And rather than pay for this now, we thought we'd wait and see how we can do by getting federal funds as opposed to using our own funds. Professional services, planning, land information. They had talked about hiring a consultant to do planning work, but we have hired a planner. We are going to help some of the local towns do their comprehensive plans, which are coming due. We'll get paid for that. The thought was, we may be stretched a little thin there. And if so, we thought, well, should we hire that? But I think once we hired our planner and we, we don't feel that's absolutely necessary. And then the case management software for CJCC. We actually, as I understand it, they found an alternative way to do what they needed done. And we don't necessarily need that now. So those are the ones that I just say, you know what? Good ideas. Let's keep our eye on them, but I don't think we're needed, they're needed this year. That's the end of this presentation. So now you have the opportunity to discuss it, ask questions, throw darts, whatever you do.
Are we, are we going to do a maintenance fund? I mean, some of these capital improvements should be under maintenance. Are we going to start a maintenance fund, put some money in there for roofs, for some of these lighting things and stuff?
And Mo, we have put away, I think, don't you have some, a reserve for buildings and?
Yes, these budgets, building budgets and the park budgets got a maintenance line item to cover majority of things.
For all the bigger ones so that we feed into it a little better?
So we maintain, so we, we don't have these big projects. We maintain the stuff as we go.
As we go.
Right. That is built into the budget.
Okay.
A year. Yeah. And I, I will say this, and that's one of the things, four years ago, I know, is when we bought something, we never paid for warranty or we never did the extra for maintenance and those types of things. And we look at those things now because, quite frankly, if, you know, you buy computers, but you don't have any service to back them up, the first time something goes wrong, you know, you're messed up. So we are more conscious of that kind of stuff and thinking ahead in terms of maintenance.
Can you tell me what happened? Did anything happen with extension? I got a couple of phone calls about extension.
Yes.
I can tell you what page we're on.
Do you know what page it is in the book here? I can tell you that extension is basically the same with the exception that we have removed the two ag agents. They were quarter time persons. And it's not because we don't like them, but because for the last several years, we've been talking with them, asking them to provide us more of what we need. We had, and, and I think for those of you in environmental services, you can, you can speak to this. They would come and make a presentation about a study they're doing. But we would ask, how many farmers in Polk County have you sat down with? How many farmers in Polk County are using this information? And we very seldom got a response. And so when we look at our budget, and I'd been in discussions for the last few years with extension, challenging them to say, provide us something that we can use. And at, at this year, we, we came to them and, and the reaction was, I was surprised that their reaction, I don't want to get into too much of the personal conversation, but there wasn't a surprise. And we're not the only ones, was kind of the, the sense I got. Because we spend a lot of money, we have good people here, but we, our farmers expect something, and we weren't getting from them. The question is, and I think that the impression I got from extension was, we know we have to change. And rather than wait for them to change again for another year, and then another year and another year, we felt we had to make this decision at this time.
So is there other parts of extension that's in here that's still funded?
Oh, yeah. That we have a community development. First, we have the for age people.
Okay.
Who am I forgetting? Don? Who am I forgetting, Donna?
Family person.
Right. So we still have, we're still supporting them at a a large level, but it's not, we just took those two quarter time people who work with three other counties besides ours. And like I said, I think some of those counties are doing the same thing.
Thanks.
You know what I'm gonna ask?
I know, I'm waiting for it.
Library, what can you tell us about library funding for our county?
We fund the library, the county, the county taxpayers, I should say, fund it because it doesn't come into our budget. We fund them over a million dollars a year, meaning the taxpayers. We fund them at what they call the ninety-five percent level. If you remember, for those of you who are here, gosh, four years ago, we were at seventy percent. We have increased that a couple of times now to ninety-five percent. At the original increase, we said, let's make it a goal to get to a hundred percent. To take it from ninety-five to a hundred percent would be fifty thousand dollars. The reason I didn't is because I did not get what I consider to be a sufficient request where they said, where as a group, I got one librarian and you and supervisor Wood saying, hey, I've been asked to get more money for the libraries. But yet, if you recall, we had, there's a consortium of libraries and they put together a presentation and they come to us and make an appeal. And we say, come and speak to the general government. Reason is, it's just simply processed that rather than, I mean, I get requests all the time and say, hey, will you send us ten thousand dollars? I got one the other day for a hundred and two thousand dollars, just can you send it to us? Will you put this in your budget? Well, it's not fair for me to say, yeah, that might be a good idea, but when, I think it should come before the general government committee so that we can ask the questions of, what is your budget now? What do you need the money for? How are you gonna spend it? How'd you spend the money we gave you last time? And I did not get from the group of libraries a request.
And about what time of year is the good time for them to come in?
A great time would be the middle of the year. It's also an opportunity for any supervisor who says, I'd like to create a resolution for any organization to give them, you know, like the libraries, to increase their funding. And that resolution would go before the general government committee. And then the general government committee would say, let's bring in the the library group and let's talk to them and ask these questions. And I, you know, I I think it's a great cause. I did check with the counties around us and and you know, because it's sometimes stated that, oh, everybody's given a hundred percent except us. Well, no, it's a hundred percent in St. Croix County. It's seventy-five percent in Burnett and it's seventy-seven percent in Barron. But Barron's proposal this year is to take them back down to seventy percent. And and the only, he said, I don't want to get into it, but it just deals with accountability. And again, I go back to that's the only way we can get accountability is if we speak to them, we hear what they use it for, how do they count their clients? Are we sure we're getting the right numbers? And and that's what we ask of all these outside groups. So that's, I mean, doesn't mean you can't do it now, but that would be, that was my recommendation.
Vincent, in addition to that, your township and your municipality pay the libraries according to their registration. Osceola pays, somebody comes from Minnesota, picks up a library book in Osceola. Osceola pays the, over to their place in Minnesota. Town of Alden pays a lot of money to the enrichment library because there's, there's more people in Town of Alden go to enrichment than Osceola or Amher. And there's, that's, that's a lot of.
I I really encourage them to to come, you know, for next year and it could be anytime, but I'd be curious to see what type of traffic are they getting? You know, I know during COVID, I suspect the traffic went way up. My question is now, is it going up or down?
Back when we had a county library system, I was on that board for ten years and really that's why we don't want to have a county library anymore because of the money that would be paying out to other libraries.
And the other thing is, you know, what does the money go to? That million dollars that they're getting from the taxpayer, fair to say, what what does that go to? I like libraries. I haven't been to one of late because I got my computer, right? And but but I I see, I know now they've kind of transitioned from a place to go get a book to a community center or people are going there to get training, to learn something, to visit with somebody. And that, you know, that's important, but I think that's something for you all to evaluate.
I just had something to that. Vince and I had a lively conversation about this. And and I just wanted to draw attention to this fact that in two thousand nineteen, we did pass a resolution, so they're not, we're not. A request from them is a little bit different than, you know, EDC or museum or fair because in two thousand nineteen, we passed a resolution that said we would adopt their, this library plan. And the library plan that we would said, we would get to a hundred percent by two thousand twenty-four. And so that was what I was going around and around is on the interpretation. And so I interpreted it that way, Vince interpreted the other way.
It did not state two thousand twenty-four, though. It said that it was a stated goal to eventually get to a hundred percent.
I know, but the heading of it, the reason I was confused is the heading of the report.
And it was the approval of a plan, not a resolution to get to a hundred percent. It was a plan.
So here, this is what's confusing because it says two thousand twenty-four on it. So that was why.
The length of the plan for the five years.
Say that again?
It it's just the plan is to cover five years, but it didn't, it just says our goal is to get to a hundred percent.
Yeah, but then when you go onto page whatever, whatever, somewhere in here, it says the goal is to get to a hundred percent. So does that mean they still do the same requests?
Yeah.
Through gen gov, that's your argument. I'm thinking, yeah, so, okay.
And when, I, when was the last time they came?
Twenty-one? Twenty-one, twenty?
Twenty, twenty-one.
And. Board.
I mean, they went, maybe if you call, they're getting over a million dollars. It went from seventy percent to ninety to ninety-five.
Curious, like they.
Yeah. And and you can see, it it was different when you had them lined up in the room here and they got up and they presented one by one. They had a regional person there for head of the consortium talking. And now I get an email from one person that says, hey, I'd like to to increase this. It'll cost you about this much. And that's a great, that's fine. But as an administrator, I feel like, well, the way to do that then is I would need to take that in front of general government. And they'd have to come in and explain what they're going to use the money for, what they've used that other million dollars for. That's all. Any other questions?
Good job.
My last budget to you. Feels pretty good.
Housing incentive. Oh, initiative in proposed twenty-two hundred.
Uh, yes, the housing, can you put that link up? And I'll just sit right here. This doesn't require a vote, but you all passed a resolution that we were going to offer interest-free loans to a community, a government entity, a tribe that is in negotiations with a developer to enhance the opportunity that builder will build there. The next step, and that's just to tell you what this next step is, I suspect half of you have seen this through committee meetings, is Malia, Donna, myself put together an online application in which they will tell us things like, you know, what type of housing is being built? Who are you working with? You know, what's the, you know, different types of information so that we can assess it, evaluate it, says, does it meet our goals? Once they complete that and we review it, we will then, assuming that it meets the criteria, we will then bring it to general government for their approval, in which we would give that loan. If you recall, it's a total loan maximum of seventy thousand, but only ten thousand per living quarter. So if it's an apartment building, they have twenty apartments in it, the most they could get is seventy thousand. If they have seven apartments in it, the most they could get is seventy thousand. If they only have five, they could only get fifty thousand, that type of thing. A duplex could get twenty thousand. That, so that's what it is. It's not a lot of money, but it's a way for that developer to cover some of their initial expenses that they usually eat. Things like the environmental study, the wetlands review, the engineering or the the drafting, that might just cover that cost. And it also says to the developer, these people want to work with me. And that makes a difference. So if if we get interest in this and they start borrowing the money, that's great. That means we got some housing being developed. If it doesn't, then it doesn't cost us anything. And we'll reabsorb that money and spend it elsewhere.
What do you want us to do on this?
I just wanted you to be aware of it and unless anybody has objections, next week, within the next week, I'll be contacting all the local communities, saying if you have questions, contact us and we'll walk through them and then by next year, they get that to us, they'll be eligible to receive the loan by twenty-four.
Contract then that you do?
Yes.
Get a payment and?
We'll do a contract and and the payment is, it's payable, payback upon the sale of that unit. You know, so the house and they sell the house, boom, money comes.
What if it's a rental and they never sell it?
Well, a developer, yeah, once it's, I think that's, the village still has to pay us back. Yeah.
Otherwise, if it's rental, they don't sell it, you'd never get payment.
Well, it's ten thousand dollars per unit. They borrowed, it's interest-free. The developer will pay back the community. Because the developer, yeah, he'll pay back the the community because then he's renting it. Yeah. Well, they'll know with the rules, I'll rent one to you first and see how that works.
Okay. Do we need to close first, Malia?
We can take a quick recess before that. Her eyes are floating.
We have an update on the regarding the MOU and Fair Society negotiations.
Is there a way to just do something until Malia gets back?
Well, we're not gonna make any major.
Five minute break, Jay.
Go ahead.
No, a five minute break, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, go ahead.
Let's take a five minute break.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The king is.
Hardware out here.
Quick update on our medical services have depleted. Did you hear about the guy that went into the, because doctor, the guy that you just examined went out, front door, fell face first on the sidewalk, dead. What should I do? Get out there quick, turn him around so it looks like he's coming in. Now we're back in order.
Good job.
Need an update on the, Malia's here, on the fair MOU negotiation, what, how do we stand on that?
Well, we gave the Fair Society through their attorney Rory until today to sign the MOU based upon Ford's unanimous decision last month. In the interim, they have not signed it. In the interim, Rory sent me the letter that was shared at the executive committee. And it it goes along with the public comment we heard this morning. Apparently, the Fair Society has appointed new folks to do the negotiating in the letter, and I could either read it or summarize it. In the letter, they're asking to step back to the to the table. It appears from the letter that they don't want the executive committee to be the negotiating team.
Right?
Or us.
Oh, or.
RS, either side, they kind of want fresh faces, no lawyers involved, so Rory would step away. I would happily step away. And that's, that's their request at this point. So if you'd like me to read the the letter, it's it's a one-page letter. I can certainly do that, but the executive committee discussed it at the last executive committee.
Yeah, we had it. Go ahead, Brad.
If we could have it read, just so everybody realizes that it was read to us, but nothing is left out.
Okay, and it's dated October sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Polk County Executive Committee members, the intention of this letter is to respond to the Polk County Board of Supervisors meetings motion passed on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three regarding signing of the final MOU or face eviction. As you all know, there have been a lot of misunderstandings mixed with a lot of raw emotions in the past few years during negotiations for a new MOU. It has been easy to find fault with a lot of parties and a lot of situations, but at the end of the day, a solution has not been determined. At the Polk County Fair Society September twenty-eighth board meeting, the fair board had great discussions about the impasse and has recognized a need to come to an agreeable resolution. The fair board is trying in good faith to come to a reasonable solution with Polk County. At the September twenty-eighth meeting, the fair board voted and approved to form a new four-member MOU negotiate, negotiation committee with new and diverse members with the goal of working together with the county for an acceptable MOU between both parties. We understand both parties have been working on this project for many years. We also recognize that both sides are very frustrated with how the time has been spent on this issue with little or no movement towards resolution. This action from the fair board is intended to show the county that the fair society recognizes the situation and wants to work out a reasonable solution to ensure this great county fair continues for many generations to come. This new fair society MOU negotiate, excuse me, negotiation committee believes the county board members also want the same for the community. Therefore, we we are asking that the, we are asking the executive committee to also consider working in good faith with the fair society. We ask that the Polk County Executive Committee bring forward a recommendation to the entire Polk County Board of Supervisors to place on hold the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three county board resolution regarding the MOU with the fair society and re-enter negotiations. This action would allow time for the newly formed fair society negotiation committee, along with new members from the Polk County, from Polk County, to work diligently to ensure that this new MOU will be acceptable to both parties. We would also ask that if the county board accepts this offer, the new committees would work together without legal counsel in attendance of meetings. If there becomes a point of needing legal counsel to attend, then both parties would have legal counsel present. We look forward to your response to this request and working with you to develop an MOU that honors and protects the fair society and Polk County's interests.
Okay.
Who wrote that letter?
It is not signed, but I believe it was the gentleman, I believe it was the gentleman who spoke during public comment.
Your honor.
Yes. But I'm not, I'm not, it's not signed. I'm not a hundred percent certain, but that's my belief. It was emailed to me from Rory saying, see the attached letter from my client.
What are your wishes? Go ahead.
Didn't the executive committee have a recommendation?
What were we gonna do?
I'd say the executive committee's decision was Malia was gonna get everyone the last red line copy we had. And Steve and Amy were going to meet with the newly formed committee, presented to them. Am I correct so far?
Yes.
Presented to them. And the executive committee's wasn't unanimous, but their recommendation was that that's the MOU that's being offered.
The one that's present.
The the one that was previously offered to them at their last county board meeting is is.
No.
That MOU was presented by the fair societies. Is that correct?
With our changes about. With our changes about, and the.
Yeah, with, with minor changes that we had, the main thing was the date certain that we had. At the, the, would have to conform with a, a date. Our recommendation are our. One year. To meet every, every year.
As far as what I can comprehend, as far as what I can comprehend, that was. The big sticking point is our county bylaws.
It was.
Policy, policy, maybe it's the word, was all our MOUs are re, are reading. Reviewed or.
Just reviewed.
Every year, and that's been our county policy, and the sticking point. I believe from their, their attorney was, they wanted. Agreement without a sunset date. And county policy says we have to have a review every year.
And it was our legal opinion that. Without a sunset date of any type whatsoever is not an agreement.
Correct.
Because it goes on in perpetuity. Go ahead.
So are we just sending Steve and Amy with what we sent them? Last, after last month's meeting?
That's what we understood, yeah. Go back with that, have them review it, go over it.
They already have.
Put in the date that we will, we'll make minor changes, they were very minor.
But I mean, they already, they already have that and didn't sign it by tonight.
That's my understanding.
I don't, they're new group, eh?
I saw the form that I sent to them, there's no place for them to sign. So I, if we send it back, we should add a signature date.
That we did.
It was not on the form that was sent to them. Whether it was an error or not, but there's no place for them to sign. So, and, and then I, I fielded a lot of phone calls about this.
Yeah.
And the biggest, I, from my understanding, the biggest thing about the date. Was they sign multi-year contracts with the vending company that does the. Games and the arcades and stuff like that. So I guess, I think we have some. If everything else is followed in the MOU. We really need a. A cover. To absorb those costs if we end their contract. Out of.
Or without it. Or recognize.
Yeah, recognize that.
But that can be done every year.
Correct.
As a review, it, it's like you have to redo it all the time.
I think the biggest, the biggest sticking point is if, if we do a year and they sign a three year contract, they need to know. Where is that other two years coming from?
We can agree.
It's just a review. It, it doesn't say you have to start completely over. A review is, the, usually the administrator looks at it.
All right, we should have a, we should have a point of order.
Yeah.
Where we're not in a committee of the whole.
Right.
We're in county board, you need to be recognized by the chair to speak. You speak once till everyone's spoken, and it's gotta stay orderly.
Well. I, back to our recommendation from the executive committee. I thought that was pretty clear. And we were going to. Re-send it to them. Or request their response to their, our sending it back to them. I didn't understand this not having a. Spot for signature. I thought it was an MOU. That they sent to us, we made some minor changes. And inserted a date and sent it back for one year.
Right, if.
And it's in their, it's in their ballpark now, I. The MOU can be negotiated, I understand. So, anyway. If that was our recommendation, how are we gonna act on this? As far as the negotiations that are depicted in the. In our agenda.
Well, if, if you take no action on this today, I will be moving to evict them tomorrow, because that's what the previous county board meeting concluded unanimously. So if you're going to change that, somebody would need to make a motion to rescind the decision, to give them just until this county board. And to have those, who was it? Steve and Amy approached the fore and say, is this MOU agreeable? And if it is, then we can. We can.
Adopt it.
Forward, yeah. So, so one of those, either you do nothing and everything we did last month stands, or somebody does a motion to. Set aside the decision of, of the county board. To evict and to give more time for this last.
Okay, if we don't adopt that right now, or somebody make that motion. You, you file, you, you're instructed from last county board meeting to evict.
Right.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to that degree?
I wouldn't make that motion.
Motion made by Doug?
Second.
Seconded by Barbara. Any conversation, go ahead.
I'd make an amendment to the motion that. It would, it would be until next county board meeting.
Okay. If both the first and the second are friendly to that, then you wouldn't have to vote on the.
We wouldn't need to vote. You agree to that?
We haven't had time to do that for the next county board?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make the motion. I, I would certainly agree to it if they can get their meetings set up.
That's what I'm not sure about, just the schedule. I'm happy to be compressed and working hard and. But I, I don't know that. Three, four weeks is with people's schedules, I just don't know if we can quite pull that off.
Three or four weeks.
Next county board.
Next month.
Next county board is a week early because it's the.
Well, that's right.
Annual, so it is an abbreviated timeframe.
I would think by the time we would. Have us meet with them. And put it back in their court. We would need a little more time than that.
That's good. You change that to December, be in the next meeting.
Well, we can't change anything, the amendment's on the floor.
I changed amendment to two months, if you want to go with two months. Let's get this done.
Yeah.
Well, there's amendment on.
Can I change my amendment?
Sure.
Yes.
Was there a second to yours?
No.
Okay.
My amendment that would be to allow until the December county board meeting.
There, yeah.
That's good.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Is that agreeable to the change?
Oh, absolutely.
Then we will act on that. Motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same signs.
Aye.
Okay, we got, it's passed unanimous.
Majority.
He incorporated the amendment into the motion, was my understanding.
Yes.
Alright, okay.
That's the way, if everybody understood they were actually voting on the, the entire motion, not the amendment, because the amendment was a friendly amendment, and so.
Change it to December.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty clear.
Sometimes you go pretty fast, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
It's clarification.
Yeah.
Our job is to take and sit down with their new committee.
Yeah.
But the county board has already decided that this is the final document, correct?
Well, that's what this board has said.
That's.
So we, we don't have any authority to negotiate with them.
No.
All we're gonna do is go over the document, explain areas that they're concerned with, or misunderstanding. And. Go from there.
Yep.
Are you gonna give us the document, the right document to go?
Sure, yes, I will email it to you right now.
Okay.
Brad.
So if they're done by, before next month's agenda comes out, can it be on next month?
Yeah.
If it's done, otherwise just, wait a minute, it says December's, give them till, we'll put it on December's agenda. What difference does it make if it's next month? No sense in conversing about it, is it? Okay, that is clear then and is gone. Confirmation appointments by county board chairman, there are no confirmations, anybody that we've. Are. They're doing whatever we do. Confirmation appointment by the county administrator. Doug Bergstrom on the board of adjustment.
Yes, we have a spot on the board of adjustments that is open. Doug Bergstrom has a very extensive background in. These types of things in terms of his profession, so he met with Bob, he seems like a strong candidate, and I recommend we. Point him to the board of adjustments.
I'd second that. Boy. I make a motion. Second.
I have a motion made in second to appoint Bergstrom to the board of adjustment, all in favor?
Aye. All that Amy's got.
I have a question for Vince.
What?
On, on, what was his background that you said?
He's a. He's a geologist. He's dealt with. Like runoff, water and runoff before, he's been involved in planning. He's been on the St. Anthony Village Planning Commission. So, you know, and he has an interest and an aptitude, and he came and talked to Bob about it and said, hey, I'd like to get involved if I could. So, you know, he seems like a solid candidate.
Who left Vince that he's replacing?
I knew you were gonna ask that. I can't remember if it's. I can't remember now, it's been a couple of months. Is anybody on the, who was on there?
What's the question?
Who left the BOA? It's been a few months, sir.
I don't know.
Yeah, Mark's still on, Mark Cop. I, I can't remember now, I can find one.
Why don't you go to the meeting and find out who was not there? Okay. Chairman's report.
Jay.
Got a motion on the floor.
Where's the motion now?
We didn't vote. Second. It's already been a second.
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have.
They do it twice.
Administrator, do you have any more to talk about?
I sure do. It wouldn't be a meeting without an administrator report. Uh, very quickly. You know, we, we. I, I learned a lesson. We had a recent. Security event with relationship to our information technology. And without getting into too much detail, we had basically a certified or a cashier's check. Apparently signed by a treasurer, our treasurer on our letterhead at a bank in Maryland. Uh, but fortunately, uh, it was. Check, they called us, said, nope, we didn't write it. It was created by somebody in South Africa. It went through a server in California. And. Ended up at a bank in Maryland. And what we learned is that attacks are happening all the time. But if you have the right security, you're stopped. So I want to thank our IT people, I want to thank Amanda and Treasurer's office. For doing what they did, but more importantly, we're gonna get better at this all the time. It happened through. Using a personal device to do county work. You know, sometimes you go home and you can access it through your phone, and you can access your work through your own personal computer. Somehow that got hacked and got information, so we're, we're plugging that hole. Update your passwords. The dual, what do you call it, the dual.
Multi.
Authentication, you know, when you have to log in and they say, now get this code on your phone and enter it. I used to cuss that, that, you know, now I know why you do that stuff. So, IT security is important, we are under threat all the time. And to have somebody like Scott Good and his staff is, is really good because he, it helps us. Finally, just a couple of status updates. Clam Falls Dam, water is down to where it's gonna be for the winter. Bids to do the work on the dam are due December second. We'll decide on February second who wins those bids. Next start, next spring, they'll start redoing the dam, it'll be done in the fall of twenty four. The other big project, the recycling center, I think you know Joe Burghammer out of.
Yeah.
Gonna be doing that work, he should be starting the next month or so with some concrete work finished next summer. We're making progress. That's all I got.
Oh, good. Finally. Any supervisor having a house that they'd like?
I have one.
Say, I think they got about twenty two hundred clams out of the clam falls, so Brad's gonna have.
We have a clam.
I think he's gonna have a clam bait.
Clam bait.
Trouble is, we'll have to go to the deepest spot, so fish me out.
Amy, who do you want?
Uh, I just wanted to bring attention to, uh, last week. There was a DOJ. Grant funded project that brought trainers to our county. In elderly abuse and later in life, so they were kind of focused on that later in life abuse piece. Um, they're also doing, I think they're going over and doing some training with the police department, but I just did the welcome, there was about. Forty or fifty people there from three different counties and mostly our counties, lots of our different. ADRC and lots of partnerships going on, so it was a really, really great, I was impressed, really good. The, the trainers, I sat in on the trainers a couple of minutes and they were really fabulous. That was one thing, and the other thing, I just wanted to bring your attention, I don't know if people saw on the paper the other day, but the Gandy Dancer Marathon drew four hundred and five runners this year or something. And the reason for that is that we have maintained, or they have their certification as a Boston qualifier. So there's this big marathon in Boston, as you all know, when the Twin Cities Marathon was on, whenever this was last month, there was this. At heat and they canceled the event. So then all of those people were quick to learn because our people here said, come register. And so within an hour, they got like three hundred people, and by the end of the week, they had over four hundred people running, so it was actually a really. Good moment that we were nimble and Polk County got a lot of. Highlights on that, so.
I'll be attending a. Friday, I would like to ask Sheriff, I've, I've been getting some calls on a couple fatalities accidents, could you give us a quick. An hour on what happened last week or last couple of weeks?
As far as the.
Them fatalities, one on the highway and one in Cedar Lake.
Right, yeah, on last Monday, we had a, a boat accident that occurred on Cedar Lake, there were two people that were ejected from the boat and one of them drowned. We had an extensive search and rescue operation the night of. And then the, the next two days following, we had a recovery action, and we did recover the young man. So twenty three year old young man from, originally from River Falls. And as far as the fatalities, uh, it's, it's, it's a high number year, I think up to thirteen. Osceola had one right in town. Just kind of down by the hospital, I believe it was.
Yeah.
Yep.
The ambulance or right in front of the fire car.
And the state patrol as well as Osceola Police Department investigated that, so we didn't have a big role other than we assisted. But it's, it's a high year, you know, our average is ten. And red thirteen, and there's still a couple more months and some snowy roads behind us, so.
I want to commend Sheriff Walker, he, he sat down there at Cedar Lake, just with the family and made sure that they were. That they had food and how he represented Polk County was just something like I haven't witnessed before. Thank you, Sheriff Walker.
Thank you. We did have assistance from Washington County, uh, St. Craig County, Pierce County, and then the Wisconsin DNR. And, you know, we do that for the family. You know, we're, we've been very fortunate over the years, we haven't had a lot of those. Because we have a lot, we're blessed with a lot of lakes and resources, so. But this is unfortunate accident and. You know, the loss of life is difficult for anybody, so numbers, even when I throw those numbers out for traffic fatalities, that's still attached to a grieving family and a, and a lost loved one, so. Very difficult, years difficult on our staff to go to those things and see those crashes, so. But we, we try to take care of our staff too, as far as offering wellness and.
Here, I'm all good, John.
Men, men, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.